What are the monthly advertising stated meeting of the lowermoreland township board of commissioners? April 11, 2023. Please rise for the pleasure to leave.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, Curbs will chair tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Public participation on agenda items will be taken as each item is discussed. For everyone's information, the board had an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss an update for a lowermoreland police department personnel matter with Chief Slaughter prior to this meeting. The first agenda item is chaired by myself, Denise A. Curts, Chair of Community Development Committee. First item on my agenda is review extension of review period. It's BET Investments. Philmont and Comlinsen Road 21-03. If anyone can't hear me, please someone raise your hand or say so. I hope I'm being loud enough in the room, but if you can't hear us on Zoom. The review period for BET project, the project is set to expire on April 20, 2023. So commissioners in our tablets, we are in receipt of a letter by the applicant Attorney Julie Von Frankelston, and it's granting the township an extension of the review through July 12, 2023. At this time, no specific action is required by our board. This is simply an advisory notice, and I will accept her letter as submitted, which is standard procedure. And it's granting the township this extension, as I stated, through July 12, 2023. For the public's information, BET Investments intends to present their preliminary plan to the Board of Commissioners at our next meeting, which is May 9, 2023. And the presentation will be for informational purposes only, with no consideration by the board at that meeting. I was informed that staff will be coordinating with the lowermoreland Township Soul District to move the meeting to the high school auditorium, if that's possible. I did like the fact that we were able to have a speaker system and it could accommodate a larger crowd. So thank you, Manager Hoffman, if we can do that. Next item on my agenda is review extension of review period. It's Caponi 2367 Pine Road. It's number 2301. This applicant has informed us, this is, this is a, an application that's pinned, Tim, right? It has been around for a really long time. And they've informed us of their intent to pursue an MPTES permit for stormwater managed, for their stormwater management obligations prior to proceeding with a public review of their two lots subdivision plan. It's on Pine Road. It's between Red Lion and Welsh. And that's where the property is. So in our tablets, we're receipt of a letter from Chuck Franz, the engineer representing the applicant, who is granting an extension to the township through June 13, 2023, for that reference plan. Again, no action is required by the board, and I will accept this extension. A review is submitted. And as Manager Hoffman and our staff have advised us, this is a really unique decision to submit for this MPTES permit prior to commencing or coming through to a public review process. So we're not, we're very unsure when they'll come into either the planning commission or to the Board of Commissioners. That's where that is. Next item on my agenda is review and consider escrow release, Weststrom 2507 Fulman Avenue. So we have a memo from Engineer Tim Woodrow, and he's stating, based on the continued progress at the work site at Weststrom Development, he's advising that the total escrow for the project is $1,389,506.29. Prior releases have been authorized totaling $987,377.54. Escrow release number eight, which is in front of us tonight, is for $116,835, which will leave a balance of $285,293.75. So this release, they did, they did a lot of work. Landscaping is about $72,775. They did some inlet filters, a little over $23,400 approximately, perforated pipe, over $5,000, $6,000, over $6,000 in mended soils, and about $9,420 in some split rail fencing. Tim, do you have anything else to add to this? That's what this release is for.
Yeah, that's correct, Denise. The vast majority of the work remaining is that along Fulman Avenue. So we have PND improvements under a separate escrow account with PND, but our walking trail, our trail lights, the landscaping of the front of the property is really what's left in this escrow account, along with money we hold in contingency to remediate any defects we find prior to final sign-off. So this work has been completed, landscaping as you described, so it's appropriate to release that.
Sure. Commissioner Housen would like to ask a question.
So this basically states that all the landscaping is done, at least in the landscaping section of the escrow.
Yes. The, it's really the parking lot landscaping, landscaping along the back wall of the property, but for under section I and J, which is the trail improvements, the hardscaping, and then the landscaping and lighting of the trail, is the balance in that account. A little over $130,000, a little balance.
Okay. So they had made some errors in where they planted their trees along the back. Did they correct those errors? Or did they?
The trees are in the right location. It is the white vinyl fence that's incorrect.
And is that in this landscaping section?
It's not. So the trees are in, and they're in the right locations. That is in that, that basis.
Okay. I'm gonna have to defer to my Weststrom experts because they might have a different opinion. Any more questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Housen. Does anyone else on the board have any questions? Does anyone from the public have any questions? Please.
Bill Entrick.
Can you come up and state your name just for the record?
Bill Entrick in for Ten Keats. We're talking about the property across the street from Wa-wa. Has anyone gone out and considered the fact that their trees that they planted are literally up against the sidewalk? And within a year, they'll be impeding on the sidewalk?
Tim, this was the email that I had forwarded after Mr. Entrick had toured the property. I wanted to look around the signage and kind of fork your way out towards Philmont.
Right. So they, they actually, there is more landscaping out there today at the entrance side than what was required on the landscaping plans. I think they did that in an effort to try and beautify the frontage and the entrance experience of several units. So I'm not sure that is a permanent landscape feature that you're seeing. I think that's more the marketing package. And that should be corrected in conjunction with the balance of landscape work along the trail.
Okay, because yeah, within a year, it'll be decibels for sure.
It's out there. There's, yeah, I did notice that. So yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Paul Tom.
Markie George Daley with Val. I really object to the refunding of this next step in terms of the escrow. The site work does not comply with the drawings. Simple as that. There's a white vinyl fence that's installed incorrectly. And for that reason, the plantings are now incorrect. That's a, that's an egregious error. It's gotta be addressed. There's a lot of loose ends here with this company. Nobody's willing to help us, the neighbors, with. Now, I'm asking the commissioners to consider us for once in this project. It hasn't happened yet.
What's wrong with the fence? Is it the wrong fence in the wrong spot, too big, too small?
I guess the situation is this. The approved plan called for a white vinyl fence to sit at the top of the retaining wall that is adjacent to the fire access. And that white vinyl fence was actually installed along that property line, between the railroad tracks of the building. Correct.
Above the retaining wall.
Yeah, correct. There is a post and rail fence that they installed early on in the project that is atop the retaining wall. So the landscaping itself is in the right quantity and in the right location. To your point, Mark, the white vinyl fence was supposed to go at the top of the wall instead of moving back along the property line.
What's the approximate difference? 15, 20 feet?
Yeah, it's about 20.
How are they gonna rectify that, Tim? Have you spoken to them about that? Is there any plan?
I guess there was, there was some discussion about how that could be mediated. Weststrom did plant an additional, right, Mark, 26 additional lights on the railroad side of the white fence. And I guess there was the hope, Weststrom's hope, that that would be a satisfactory solution to, to the situation as the fence is installed.
That's my understanding that Weststrom did plant more trees upon the residence request.
That's correct.
Mark, with the fence being where it's at, doesn't that provide you more protection in lack of view further?
Not really. And I'm just trying to advocate for everybody here. I've got to take off here on this, on these additional trees that they graciously supplied, 13 and 13. They are planted incorrectly as well. They are planted in the wrong spots. And I'd like you to acknowledge that.
Yeah, Chuck and Mark and I walked the property on Monday afternoon. And the additional 13 that were planted to the east side of the new building are slid down to the property line rather than adjacent to the edge of the new building, as we discussed with Weststrom.
Yeah. So the trees, the extra trees they put in was, was to rid of, basically make the fence issue go away?
No, that will not. Now, the, the, the fact issue is, is wrong. Per, per the drawings that the commissioners approved, it's installed wrong the entire life.
So then, so why did they plant extra trees? Were they under the impression that the fence didn't have to move, they put extra trees down?
We had some dealings with them in the meeting. And Tim was mediated there, and he did a great job. And he thought that these additional trees would help, 13 and 13 on each side, more or less covering the parking lot. He agreed to that, Westron. He agreed to that. But these additional trees, not, these additional trees have nothing to do with the improper placement of the fence.
So why did they plant the additional trees? Sound barrier?
Sound, yeah, for sound debate.
Okay.
They were, they were planting instead of being, providing covers for the, essentially, parking lot going forward. They started at the end of the property line. They ran out of trees on the east side of the building. They're, they're a good hundred feet short. On the west side, they ran other trees, and there's, it's probably between 40 and 50 feet short. So this is, it's, it's like a ragtag operation. I, you're holding an escrow.
So if the fence is up here, and you want it to move closer to the building, you're actually lowering it, right? Or no?
Yes.
I know, I know. Yeah.
Sorry, Chris.
We're just trying to.
No.
No, 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 no.
I'll help, Mark.
I'm just trying to get an understanding.
What they did was they put a stock picket fence on top of the retaining wall, which wasn't on the plan.
On?
Post and rail.
Post and rail, I'm sorry, post and rail. And what was on the plan was that six-foot white vinyl fence to run the length of the wall. Behind that vinyl fence, the landscaping was supposed to be installed, trees. So if you look at the original drawing, there's 48 trees behind that fence, correct? Behind the fence. They put everything in front of the fence. So now, we went, when we seen that happen, we set up a meeting with Mr. Herzog, and we agreed to 26 additional trees being planted along the back. But Mr. Herzog refused to put them in the building's view because his tenants wanted to see the train go by that live in these apartments. That's his, that was his, that was his statement, okay? Not ours.
It was.
So looking at the print, we thought 13 and 13 on either, east and west end of the development would be sufficient. But what they did was, they didn't take it from the building line. They put them where they wanted to put them, and now they go down the hill. And then there's an elevation in the back where it goes up, down, up, down. And they planted the other trees more towards the parking lot where you can see that are behind the fence. So for the length of that building, there's no landscaping behind there. And everything on Dale Road is exposed in our backyard. And what that does is it creates an echo chamber. When a train goes by, it bounces off the building, comes back twofold into the neighborhood. And where the parking lots are, there is no wind barrier or sound barriers. And the planting of the trees were wrong because the sound barrier trees are supposed to be zigzag. So one's supposed to be in the front, one's supposed to be in the back, so they grow together to make a length of trees to where it blocks the sound. And we don't have none of that right now. So what we're dealing with on Dale is an abundance of noise. And we just asked Weststrom to be a good neighbor and do that row of trees behind there, but Mr. Herzog refused to do that.
So are they good with just putting new trees back here? Keep the fence where it was used? Good with keeping the fence where it is?
Yeah, absolutely.
They put trees back here?
See, that, that's what you call a burn. And I thought if they put the picket fence at the front, they would have put the fence on top of the burn, which would have been at its highest point, okay? But what they did, they moved it about five foot down, and then they landscaped in front of that, not behind it. So behind that fence is a road that they created, okay? We walked it, okay? It's the length of the property, and there's nothing there. So all that noise that we're hearing from Philmont Avenue, Wa-wa, the heat plant, because he cut all his trees down now, is just magnified twofold in the neighborhood there. So we are getting that as like an echo chamber now, that noise that a simple row of trees could probably take care of in five years. These arborituses that we suggested, they grow two foot a year. So you're looking at a wall of 10 trees there, which not only is a, is a sound barrier, it's a wind barrier, and it will densify the noise. That's all it has before. It's not a big, it's not a big project.
Did you tell them, Tim, that put trees there? Or no?
Yeah, so I guess after Mark and Chuck and I met on Monday, placed a call to John Herzog. I haven't heard back from him yet. I would agree that the trees that he was supposed to plant are shifted nearly 100 feet, Mark, I'd agree, to the, to the east. And so my conversation is going to be, when I speak to him, to try and encourage him to work with us and the community to add those additional trees along that fence line to complete the goal of, of the meeting we had, you know, kind of the settlement camp. So I'm fully committed to do that for the, the, the.
The way it sits right now, you basically have white vinyl fence. Excuse me. So I'm sorry.
No, go.
We basically have a, a white vinyl fence that's facing the railroad. If it would have been done correctly, any of the trees planted, whether the ones on the plant or the additional ones, they would be between that white vinyl fence and the railroad. They would be an abatement to the noise. They would be absorbed, you know, they would absorb noise. The way it is now, it's raw vinyl to the tracks, to the neighborhood. There, it's a no-brainer. It's, it's all reflective circles. So.
Let me just clarify real quick, so I can understand what you're saying and what you want. So we're all on the same page here. You have the rail up top, right? The split rail fence on top of the retaining wall. Am I correct?
That's right, yes.
And you have on the far side, right against the tracks, the white vinyl fence.
Not right against, there's 20-foot.
If you want the trees put in between the split rail and the white vinyl.
Just like it says on, says on the.
That correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I, we, sure. I think you were saying you want the trees behind the white vinyl fence.
Yes, that's right.
We want the trees behind.
Because Joe, the, the difference that we're talking about.
Okay.
All right, so they want it in between the tracks and so on. So these are the additional trees.
Those are the additional trees.
Yeah, right.
But you want them zigzagged between the tracks.
Yeah, they're supposed to be one, one.
Is that what it was called, the end plant?
So the plan, so the plan called for just one white vinyl fence with the landscaping behind it.
Yeah.
Be naked, Chris. That's important. Landscaping behind it.
Right, those are the words I believe that I just said.
Yes, right.
So I want you to clarify.
Make sure. Emphasize. It was clear, just emphasize. So it's, I think that the difference that we're having right now is the perspective of who those are related like for, for who's benefit.
Yeah.
So the Weststrom has said that they want their residents to be able to see the landscape. So that's why in their minds, between how they modified it to be the split rail plantings white vinyl fence, is a more desirable product for their residents, because they have the right to modify it.
Yeah.
So, so I guess that, you get it.
Someone say yeah.
Well, so you get into.
Right. Does someone say yeah?
Yes.
So you get into the question as to the difference between what was shown on the plan that is ultimately approved by the board and what overall the township regulations would provide for. Either version are permitted by the township ordinances. The question is, is to, based off of what was on the approved plan. So every resident, every property owner of a lowermoreland can come in and get a permit for something. They also have the ability to change that. The difference in this instance is that this is a very large land development project that caused a fundamental change on the property compared to how people perceive the impacts of the things that they do on their smaller residential properties. This just, it feels like it has a bigger impact because it does.
So what recourse do we have to get these guys what they want?
Or to follow the plan that was approved.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
There's a confusion as to whether or not they can alter this plan and what, because the authority we have to enforce these alterations. So what can we do to get these guys the satisfaction they want? That's my question.
Yeah, and I think the, the ability we have to keep Weststrom's attention is our $126,000 in contingency money we wanted in the escrow account money. And so I think that money is going to just be fine to our.
Whoa, 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 Tim, wait a minute though. That money that's still in escrow is for the front of the building. The money that you're going to pay tonight was for the landscaping that was done in the rear of the building and the sides of the building and the entrance of the building, not the front of the building.
Yeah, and then Chuck, so what happens is.
They're going to want the money.
So Chuck's thing technically was not correct.
Yeah, so Chuck, here's what happens.
You're talking about contingency, not the money.
So the.
Okay, you're right.
The, the development agreement has a spreadsheet of all these line items of what they gotta do.
I got you. I see it.
And what we are allowed to do is hold an additional 10% of that original value.
Okay.
So we have a 10% contingency line item in the escrow account that is meant to deal with unexpected events that may occur. And in this instance, our 10% is about $126,000. And so my conversation with Mr. Herzog is going to be, and I've already had this conversation. I said the fence is in the wrong location. You know, what are we going to do to make that right for the community? And the initial reaction was to meet with you guys, get the additional arboretis. I don't think that that goal has been achieved. And so I think that there is additional plant material that Weststrom owes the community based upon the meeting we had with John Herzog, you know, a month or so ago. And so that's my conversation that I'm going to have with Herzog, you know, as soon as he calls me back.
When's that 126, the 10% due to, before, we have, is it the next meeting?
Yeah, so no, there's no, no request to release that additional money as of this meeting. Correct, Joe. So as they complete work, if they were to, for example, in the next month, complete the walking trail along in front of the property, they could come back and ask for their walking trail money to be released so they can pay their contractor as we hold that money in the escrow account. There would still be $126,000 in this contingency line item in the development agreement that we have specifically to keep their attention. And so I think that is the tool that I would suggest that.
Okay, so this release has nothing to do with what's.
The contingency money.
Okay. My other question. How many additional trees were, because I'm hearing what you said, you said 13 and 13. How many additional trees did?
We agreed to 26 that after
13, 26.
Those 26 are not correctly placed. In order to get to the place where we agreed to, we probably, certainly 13 and probably not 10, and there's probably 23 that they would owe us to correct to the.
The second, the second planting.
Right.
Right. That doesn't, doesn't, doesn't address what is in.
The balance of the fence line that is incorrect there. Mark, I can disagree.
Yeah. And, you know, this is, this is your chance to hold, hold to them. They've been pretty carefree about all of this in my perception. Why wouldn't you, and this is part of it, why wouldn't you just hold, hold the line on this until it gets squared away? You, you, you've got to advocate for the residents at some point. That's, you know, you've got a code of ethics here.
We're all advocating, Tony, and we're in agreement with you right now. We're trying to help you right now.
Okay. Well, how are you gonna, how are you gonna help?
That's what this, yeah, our conversation has been about.
Yeah, we're in agreement with you.
We have to work in the rules that we're allowed to work within, and that's what we're trying to do. That's always asked what our recourse is.
Okay.
Is this escrow money for what they didn't complete? This, this, is this escrow money they're asking for?
Tonight are actually the plant material that was installed in conjunction with the approved plans. So that is, the plant material is in the right location and was installed correctly. What we're talking about is how to mitigate the incorrect placement of the white vinyl fence.
So the white vinyl fence isn't in the right spot.
Was that part of this money, Tim? It was not?
No, it wasn't. The planning was.
And that's done correctly?
Well, according to Tim, it is. According to us.
He's our expert.
Right. We, we, it's not there where it should be. If you look at the drawings that we have, we have the final plan from Weststrom, the planning and the fence.
We walked it on Monday.
I know we did.
I showed you.
Yeah, I know, I know. There's four foot more, right, Tim, we measured? From where that fence could come up to the top of the burn, or the burn, right? And then there's a scepter that's been in the back of the property.
The, the plant material.
The fence is down in the back of the property where they damaged it with their bulldozers that scepter's unaware of. We have a meeting with scepter coming up to walk that property back there to see what scepter they can do for us. Because we lost all our coverage. We did. I mean, you come down, you can see directly across into Wa-wa Park, and I could wave to you if I knew it was you coming down. I mean, and all that noise is just echo chambering up, up that way, and nothing's there to block it.
And I want to add to what Chuck just mentioned. There's at least 100 feet of vinyl, green vinyl coated chainline fence that's been destroyed by Weststrom.
I just seen it in Tim's pictures.
They knowingly. Uh, they knowingly, uh, didn't do anything about it. Uh, what, what does that tell you about their character? Uh, it's, it's, in certain spots it's knocked down and, and other spots it's split open. At a certain point, it's a security issue. They did, they did the damage, they did the damage.
Has scepter been aware of it?
We don't, we don't know yet. Alright, but again.
But you have a meeting with them?
Yes.
Do they know why they're coming to a meeting?
Yes, yes, they do.
Does it not involve the fence?
Well, I didn't mention the fence. I wanted to get an easement stake put into where their easement is for the property with Westrum. So we can determine what, how much space we have from their property to their property. And then we'll mention the fence too.
See your strength.
Yes.
So I want to go on record about this fence, this, this chain link fence issue. It's, it's severe, it's damaged, it's going to have to be replaced. Uh, so I want to be on record about it. Uh, so if somebody should.
Mr. DeGeorge, Mr. McDate, I hear you, acknowledging everything you say. And I have everything down, the chain link fence, the vinyl fence and the plantings.
And twenty-three more trees.
And, and twenty-three more trees.
At least twenty-one.
Mr. Woodrow, but I also want our solicitor to weigh in, he is here on Zoom. He's not sitting next to me, but I would like Solicitor Rice also, we are going to work with you on this matter. Solicitor Rice.
Well, uh, what I, what I heard is that uh, things were done that weren't per the plan. So if that's any, if that's any part of this escrow tabulation, if they're asking for money for anything on this, and I'm looking at the tabulation here, they're asking for money to be released from things that weren't done properly, uh, that ought to be carved out of this escrow release. Um, I know there's a hundred and, I think Tim said twenty-eight thousand dollars, and there's more money than that left in the escrow, so there's plenty of, um, I mean, there's plenty of leverage here to get this done, but if they need to move something, I don't, I'm not sure I understand the issue with the fencing, but it sounds like some things weren't done per the plan, so Tim, I wouldn't release that money to them if that's on this calculation here. Here, um, just to get their attention and then see what they're, or see what they're willing to do to, 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 to correct the situation. Um, sounds like they planted a lot of trees, but it doesn't sound like they're in the right place, uh, on the back of that property.
Um, the, uh, the trees are in the right place and in, in the right quantity.
Okay.
The white fence is what is incorrect.
And the, the trees that are, I think we're all in agreement, were not put in the right place are trees that were agreed to as a private agreement between the, between Chuck and Mark and Westrum. They're not things that we have the ability to, um, hold against an escrow because they're not part of the approved plan.
Didn't Tim media that though?
Yeah, Tim, isn't that man who burned?
Yeah, but we haven't yet acknowledged that, I would say, so.
Oh, you, you will, you will acknowledge it, you were there, correct?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, but I have a lot of.
That were agreed upon.
Right.
I was at.
And, and in my mind, those additional trees would be covered in our contingency line item based upon the agreement that we struck in the field. That's in my mind.
Because included in this specific release, and there is something that I am going to recommend the board withhold that is part of this request. But the, the landscaping that is specifically escrowed has been installed. You walked the property yesterday and it's there, correct?
Correct.
So that, I think we have an obligation there. Then at the bottom, there is nine thousand four hundred and twenty dollars.
Sorry.
Related to split rail fence. That's at the bottom. That should be withheld for now because I don't think we yet have a clear instruction for whether or not we need to have them simply get rid of the split rail because it was not on.
What's the value of the split rail?
Nine thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. And then I think we need to have a conversation about whether or not we're having them move this, uh, the vinyl fence down to the location of where the split rail was installed.
Oh, okay.
Well, is that going to be physical, pushing the highway fence?
So, but I think we can, we can have that conversation. The question is.
Well, that's what we're asking for.
Yeah, but say a year down the line, they come in for a zoning project. After all of this is done, if what they ask to do is compliant with the zoning ordinance, as you would have the right to do on your house, they would have the right to do about their business. So I think we would want to make sure that before we have them do this and go, go through this, that they're not creating a condition that is otherwise permitted by our zone. Just so that we don't temporarily create an acceptable condition to, that they have the legal right to change soon. I think it would make sense to take a look at that to make sure.
So, so let me give you correct then, so we plant these trees and then they come back and ask for zoning, so they can take them trees out a year later?
I wasn't talking about the location of trees. Um, I was talking about where you can legally put a fence on your property. So zoning would deal with.
Well, well, Tim admitted the fence is wrong.
Per the, uh, approved and recorded final plan. But there's all sorts of ways that you can design something that would be.
So did they come back and ask to move that fence to where it is now, or did they just arbitrarily put it there?
Right, and they, they made a decision that they wanted to have the split rail there so that their residents could see the landscape. And that's different than the thing that was on the line.
So.
So that's the thing that I'm saying, we need to.
We need to hold that one. Alright.
So I think just.
Is the governing body for change orders? If they, is there a governing, are you the governing body if the developer decides to do something differently than what's on the drawings? Who's the governing body?
It's usually dealt with by the township engineer. If it's a minor change on a plan, if it's something major, it's got to come back to the board. But there's always field conditions that come up. I don't know whether this is one of them. But I think just so everybody's clear, because this request was made last month, uh, deny the whole escrow release because of maybe a ten percent problem. And we can't do that, but we can deny the part of the escrow release that is the problem, which is, it sounds to me like the fence, so, you know, that's, that's pollution here, um. You know, one of the escrow releases.
Wait, for tonight, the recommendation is to do the, what, what is requested less nine thousand four hundred.
So one of seven four fifteen.
Okay.
Now, I want to just say this, I, you know, the, there, this direction you're taking is going to get to a point where I can foresee this developer, uh, not complying at the very end and, and taking the loss on whatever he's, he's due on the escrow. I, I, uh.
Well, we hold it for that reason.
Yeah, that's, so that's, the, the, how should I take that money and do the improvement? It'd be a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Oh, so you can take the money and do the improvement?
Cause I, I envision that.
Okay. Correct, yeah.
So that's the solution right there, all the money, then we do.
Yeah, the other trees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was a joke.
I'll claim, I have no time to do it. I'll claim, there's enough room back here, so.
I, I do, I, I see someone, hand raising, just state your name and address for record.
Belentrian Wood and Tetr. Uh, the, is the vinyl fence part of this escrow?
No, no.
So then, was it already escrowed back to them?
No.
No.
And was it?
I don't think so. So that's an important question.
I, we, we, we got double fences.
We got double.
Essentially, we have one that is specifically escrowed and the other one we do with.
Yeah.
But that was done as a contingency then?
It was not released though, Chuck.
The split rail was in contingency?
No, the vinyl fence was.
Yeah. Okay, so then, if, if the final result is the vinyl or arbor vibes between the vinyl fence and the railroad, uh, there has to be a plan of staggering. I, I haven't seen a picture, I'm just one by interpretation. Uh, so they should all be flagged, you know, and approved before they get put in. If, if the plan is to, uh, for sound barrier, they should be staggered.
That was on our final plan.
Right, no, they're not there now.
The arbor buddy is not on your final, that is not an obligation of this development.
The, the, the thirteen that we agree to want to plant it is straight line, it goes down the barn.
Since they put the vinyl fence in the wrong location.
Right.
We're going to force them to put arbor vibes behind it.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's not in the right location. And we'll relea- release the contingent money plus the nine thousand we hold there, right, once they do that.
Yeah.
Right.
And if they ultimately keep the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, that is a perfect summary.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If you'd like to make a motion.
Well, well, wait, we'll see if anybody else, we have people on Zoom, anyone else in the room at this point? Anyone else on Zoom? Have any questions? We're good. Solicitor, anything else before we wrap this up?
Well, just one question, Tim, that fence is scepter's problem, not Westrum's problem?
Um, certainly, uh, the damaged fence is a question, Chuck, I don't know whose problem that is. Um, if you, I was, per meeting, I was going to contact scepter and see what they would say about that. Um, certainly, there will come a point when Westrum is going to ask for a punch list. They're going to say, we're done, uh, that triggers the township, they took away and do a final punch list of the project, you know, dead trees, cracked curb, you know, missile line, streetlights, fence along scepter, I would include that all in a punch list. Uh, and then that will be given to Westrum. Uh, they would then make those repairs, we could all then agree that everything is done pursuant to the plan and in good order, and then we would consider a final release of escrow. So, uh, I'm curious as to what you find out with scepter, whether scepter believes that.
Of course.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
One more thing, uh, we'd like to, I'd like to see if we can get a copy of this, uh, punch list.
Oh, yeah, Chuck, I didn't prepare yet, Mark, so.
Yeah.
When, when I prepared, it's a public document.
Okay, yeah, uh, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, I'll move, I'll make a motion. Under escrow release number eight, it will be in the amount of a hundred and seven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. It'll be less nine hundred, nine thousand four hundred and twenty dollars because we're omitting the split rail fence.
Certainly.
The motion was moved and seconded to approve, uh, an escrow release as a part of escrow release number eight, as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Next, building official report. We had seventy total permits for the month of March. Fifty-nine residential, eleven commercial, uh, a hundred and eighty permits were issued this year to date. Uh, I want to just highlight this, uh, the total was thirty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars. Well, last year to date, we had a hundred and eighty-nine total permits and the total was two hundred and twenty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars. So it's a big difference. There were nine certificates of occupancy that were issued this month. Under inspections, we had ninety-one inspections performed, sixty-seven residential, twenty-four commercial. Under complaint violation notices issued in days to comply and stated actions, there was twenty-one. Again, I would like to highlight that, 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 that doesn't mean there isn't a lot of calls and visits. Use of occupancy certificates, there's, there was two business UNOs and ten construction UNOs. And that's it for that. Does the board have any questions for Bob Shalik, Bob Shalik?
Bob, Bob.
Come on, Bob.
What if you come up and talk about fifty oh three grasshopper, because, uh, the neighbors are, you know, complaining. So what the process is so that they understand, I think they're on the line. They were on the line.
I have the. I will speak louder.
Hey, keep up.
This has been a contin- continuing problem with particular property. Uh, we've taken this property to court twice. Uh, one time it was basically removed to give the homeowner an opportunity to correct the problem, not getting the subventions. On the second step, which was about six months ago, uh, they were again cited and found guilty by the district justice. Um, we are about to, uh, do an additional citation action. But all that we can do really is just continue to cite them. Um, there's a matter of vehicles that are derelict, unlicensed, untacked. A swimming pool that's not properly kept, uh, the houses vacant, but yet has had entry, points of entry which are unsafe. Um, and there's, has been construction going on that we don't have any permits for. So we're, we're, we're staying on it, doing about all, all the permissible to do, which is issue citations.
So, um, when you say they were cited and found guilty.
Yes.
Is that, um.
They have to pay a fine. They have, they have a fine to the district court.
Did they?
They did, but they're, but they've arranged a payment plan with the court. Um. Just the fines are, the fines can get pretty stiff.
Yeah.
But they're, they're about to get a whole new additional order of fines, so.
Okay, if they're unable to pay the funds, does, I mean, is the, are they making the mortgage payments on it?
I, I.
As far as we know, it's not.
It's.
But.
Or, or it's not in foreclosure, but it was purchased through a sheriff's sale. Um, but I don't believe it's in foreclosure.
So we, all we can do is what we're doing, is continue to issue violations, um, and take them to court.
If there's anything else, I would defer to Mr. John Rice in that respect, there's more, more that can.
Yeah, can I, can I just? I didn't hear the name of the property, what property are we talking about, Bob?
It's a large property on, um, Grasshopper Road, uh, fifteen oh three.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fifteen oh three. Sober.
And we, we've issued, what, property maintenance code violation?
Uh, we've issued property maintenance, building code and standard zoning code violations.
And they've never appealed any of those to the zoning area board or the board of appeals or?
They, they have not appealed. They, they have not taken them to, uh, common police.
Yeah, common police court is, is really the only solution here. I, I don't really want to get into the discussion, uh, in a pu- in a public forum about how to do that. Bob knows how to do that. We've done that with, uh, the Chaba property. Um, you know, that was probably the most recent one, but you know, you do have to go into county court and be committed to going with that route. Route, unfortunately, district justice court is just a monetary fine and a slap on the hand. And then, you know, nothing really changes, uh, in, in a lot of cases, sometimes it does, but this sounds like it's pretty ingrained on that property. And, uh, you're gonna, you would have to go that next step to, to actually get some kind of, uh, relief. So, but I, you know, um, I mean, I would suggest that Bob and I talk about it outside the meeting and then, you know, see what the history and where we can go and we can report back to the board.
Yeah, the neighbors are really up in arms and I don't blame them, it's an eyesore. On their beautiful street, I mean, it's a gorgeous street, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and there's this house that's falling apart. Um, you can tell there's been water invasion and there's, they cut down all the trees in the front um, for, which would have given them cover, you couldn't have seen that house then, but they cut them all down. And, uh, they left these derelict cars in the thing. At first they took some away, but now there seem to be more again.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's, that's why we're going to continue with the.
Well, thank you for all you do, I wish there was more we could do. But if you decide to take any further steps, please keep me involved.
Sure.
Cause I'm getting the calls.
Yes.
Too, I know you are also.
We, we both are, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
You're welcome.
Well, except the Bob's reports are submitted, anyone doesn't have any questions for Bob Shalik? Uh, my liaison report positions for the planning commission, community events and local and township school district, DEI, um, as of today, I don't believe that we will be having.
No, there was a planning.
Meeting this month. Uh, under DEI, unfortunately, I was unable to make the last in-person meeting because I was out of town for a wedding on a Sunday evening at a state. Uh, but the next meeting will be taking place virtually on Monday, May twenty-second, from six to eight P M. And I had a brief, uh, conversation with Mr. Miles today about, uh, what that, uh, meeting encompassed. And he was actually there to school for meetings evening, so he's sending me some information, I was unable to look at it prior to night's meeting. But he said it went well and there are some things, you know, being put in place before the next month implemented. Uh, under community events, we had an unbelievably great egg hunt, which took place on Sunday. Uh, under community events, we had an unbelievably great egg hunt, which took place on Sunday, April second. Instead of Saturday because it was rained out, it's youth success. And it was amazing seeing the smiles on the children's faces. Uh, I want to thank, uh, Hines Valley Library's leadership, um, the adult and student volunteers, our township volunteers and township staff. That helped our public works department who were on site, uh, the, for the event, uh, to set up, to take down. And a special thanks to our assistant Leah and Commissioner Canaly and Commissioner Allison. And any other, other commissioners that showed up, there was just a sea of people. And it was just amazing to see if you, if you saw the pictures that were that Leah posted. Uh, there were so many people, crowds of people and the bunny and it was, it's really beautiful. It's a wonderful event to see so many families coming and having such a great time with their children and grandchildren. Um, that's a generational wonderful event. And in March, we had a really greener workshop and it was held, uh, in the township building here on March fifteenth. It was, uh, master gardener Sharon Bruce. And she presented a lot of, uh, amazing, um, earth friendly, uh, options for people. We had approximately twenty attendees. Um, upcoming events, we have our Earth Day event and it's going to be next week, Friday, April twenty-first. Early six thirty at Lowermore Park. We have tree planting, a park cleanup and, um, Earth Day bags and games. It's rain or shine and, uh, no R S B P is required. Uh, in May, we have a workshop, it's zero waste living. And it will be held Wednesday, May tenth at six o'clock. It's approximately two hours, another Penn State master gardener, Eve Pula, PhD. And, uh, it's really neat, it's, she supports the elimination of trash. Um, and the adoption of practices that, uh, eliminates, um, and eliminates trash in your life. And teaches you how to create, uh, your life with zero, zero waste. And how you can, uh, implement this in your daily life practices. So, um, in your life choices. So we're looking forward to that, that kind of workshop. It cuts down on your recycling and bottles and waste. And then in the fall, we have master gardener Robert Pace, who is going to, uh, again. Present stormwater basics for homeowners. He's unable to present this spring because he is having his first grandchild. So he, he presented, uh, for us on Zoom and his presentation is amazing. Uh, and, uh, Director Werner and I are having some park cleanups with the school district again. And we're looking forward to that. We'll have one on the twenty-first and one on the twentieth. Uh, with two of our parks, we were supposed to have one this week on Thursday, but due to the kids getting back in swing. Uh, after spring break, uh, they are just, they're just, they're too, uh, too busy with their work. So that concludes my agenda items for this evening. And the chair recognizes Commissioner Pace, Chair of the Public Works Committee. Commissioner Pace.
Excellent. Item F is review and consider the paving bids and seal, seal coating. I'm going to pass this over to Manager Hoffman for a quick update and summary.
Sure, and then Steve, feel free to hop in if there's anything that I don't, uh, that I'm trying to represent that is outside of my professional expertise. Uh, so we did two bids with the board's authorization for our paving program, uh, for twenty twenty-three. Um, the first is our standard Mill and Overlay. Um, so that had a base bid that included Sheffield, Redwing, Barnswallow, Walk Circle, Holt, Cardinal, Robin, Dove Circle, Bluebird and Lewis Lane. And then there were four alternates, uh, three of them in Lowermoreland. Um, the first being Lampley Lane, the next one being Hillside, Essential and Parkside. The next one being Surrey Winchester and Baldwin. And then the fourth, uh, is Bernathans, uh, selected roads. So when we prepare the, the paving budget and recommendation for the board, um, there's no local tax dollars that go into that program. So it's primarily our annual allocation from the state with the fuels program. Um, but then it's also bolstered in many years, um, by Aqua's half with paving obligations from all the areas that they've done. Um, their water main replacements. So in total, that gave us a budget this year for six hundred and fifty-four thousand five hundred twenty-one dollars. The other thing that that takes into account is that. Historically, we've always kept a three hundred thousand dollar fund balance, um, in our highway aid fund to prepare for essentially seat money for some sort of emergency issue. Sinkhole on a road or a, a culvert small bridge that, that has an issue. So that's where we get that number this year, six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. So based off of the pricing that came in for the Mill and Overlay, um, we're recommending that the board, uh, award the bid, uh, that was the low bid from Glasgow. Um, and in the amount of for Lowermoreland, six hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred twenty dollars and twenty cents. And for the Bernathan portion, forty-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty cents. Um, if, in other years where we have, um, kind of included several alternates just to see how the market plays out, see what the pricing comes in. We're not always in a position to recommend all of the alternatives be done, but the pricing came in a little bit under what we were expecting. So that's really the priority. This is what will get roots, the next ten, fifteen, hopefully twenty years, um, of, of lifespan. So any questions on the kind of the base normal contract and what we're.
It was about forty thousand on their budget.
Yeah, it was, it's, the bids came in about fifty cents more than we paid last year. So, I mean, uh, the two bidders were Marcy and Glasgow, were about ten thousand dollars apart.
It was super close.
So it was very good pricing.
So then the, the next component, uh, we had also asked the board to authorize bidding for seal coating. Um, so this was for, uh, some identified roads that while the, uh, top surface may be, uh, not in the greatest condition. Uh, road surface, uh, was in good enough condition to try the seal coating program. I mean, we're hoping that we will be able to recommend this, um, so that we can see how it plays out and see if this becomes an annual part of the, the program that we recommend. So the, the base bid for seal coating, um, which is Heather Hillcroft, Bent, Brayborn and Jefferson Lane. Um, was a hundred and sixty-seven thousand fifty-three dollars and seventy cents. So if we take, um, the, the kind of standard way that we prepare the budget, there was only thirty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars available. All of it wanted to maintain that three hundred thousand dollar fund balance. But I wanted to look at this in some, some different ways because perhaps then kind of just the strategy that we've had to keep that three hundred thousand dollars wasn't a truly necessary one. Um, and maybe would give us some flexibility to, to award this second bid. So the couple of things that I look at are that we have built up a sizable, um, and just like a good financial practice, um, the rainy day reserve and our general fund. Even though I would really never like want to recommend that we use that if we had some sort of immediate emergency that does help with cash flow. Um, but the, the real one that is, uh, I think helpful is the money that we have in our capital improvement traffic safety fund. Um, when the Philmont Country Club Development ultimately, uh, signs its development agreements and starts to meet its funding obligations. There's going to be a million dollars that gets deposited into that fund immediately. There's an extra two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that will come in based off of the, uh, as occupancy is issued for the new homes. So my recommendation is that we start to acknowledge that as kind of, it's all, it's the funds that we use today for, for, um, grant matches. Um, but we're able to make those last a long time, um, so that we would use those funds in the hypothetical event of an emergency and create some flexibility to dig into what that otherwise, that three hundred thousand dollar, uh, fund balance that we've been keeping in highway aid. So all of that said, um, as we've thought about this more, recommending that the board award the base bid for the seal coating to Asphalt Maintenance Solutions. Who was the, the sole bidder for this? Uh, but in that hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar amount, that will still leave us with, after we do all of this, a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in that highway aid fund. So that's still helpful seat money, um, but allows us to, to do kind of our most robust available paving and seal coating program that we could do for this year. So, um, if that's all acceptable to the board, then there would be two separate motions that we will be requesting. The first, uh, being a motion to award the Mill and Overlay bid to Glasgow, um, for the amount that we described. And that's for the Mill and Overlay at Lowermoreland and Bernathan Borough. And then the second being a motion to award the bid of asphalt maintenance solutions, uh, for the seal coating.
Board have any questions with, I think that's the summary? Paul with?
Bill?
How long does the seal coating last?
Well, I'm here, I need to tell you.
Really?
Yeah.
So that's why we want to try.
That's why, it's a, it's a good idea to try it on roads that are.
Right, right, I, I'm familiar with the roads, I just didn't think, I didn't see that at all, that's why.
And, uh, Steve and I were talking earlier today that there's now roads that we've paved in, in my career span that are going to be getting to that point where if this is a good product. Um, and is able to buy us some of that extra time, it'll be a way to extend the life of the roads. While we're trying to eat into the, the, the kind of more broad goal of getting every road paved within a twenty-ish year period.
And we used the bid for?
This specific product.
No.
We've done what micro-surfacing.
I've done micro-surfacing before.
Which was not particularly successful everywhere. Interims. Drew, over, uh, through while the road was peeling up. That would be an example of it not working. Um, there's other roads that did work better than that. And we're not recommending any road that would have, say, that scale of traffic count, so that is, I think, another thing.
No, we're actually going to do it on the lower roads, but Penn Dot is actually doing the same exact thing in Bob's camp.
Okay.
In that.
So the cost of seal coating is significantly less than the cost of paving.
Yeah.
It's maintenance.
Yeah, so it's a maintenance product.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
All right, I'll make a motion, number one, which is for the. Paving version toward twenty twenty-three, pave a bid to Glasgow Inc. in the amount of six hundred and sixty-four thousand seven hundred five dollars, seven cents for the specific streets of Lowermoreland Township and Bernathan Borough.
Certainly.
Motion was moved and seconded to award the twenty twenty-three paving bid to Glasgow Inc. as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion passed.
Motion number two is for the seal coating. I'd like to make a motion to award the bid from Asphalt Maintenance Solution for the amount of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand fifty-three dollars and seventy cents.
Certainly.
Motion was moved and seconded to award the bid to Asphalt Maintenance, the amount of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand fifty-three dollars and seventy cents. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion's passed.
Next item is the Historic Architecture. Movement, so we have, um, two board members, Richard Tran and Carol McCann, who are set to expire April eighteenth. Carol's interested in continuing to serve on the harbor. There is a resolution for a reappointment to a four-year term. Richard Tran, I see no longer like to serve on the harbor after several terms. He is one of the two residents of the historic district as required by our code. Therefore, a new member of the business in the district will need to be found and replaced. And as always, please advise anyone who might be interested in stepping up. So, any questions from the board? Paul with? Ruth might be stepping up?
There's a few, there's a few streets I was speaking to Manager Hoffman, um, that it encompasses, so.
If you need to take a look.
I have somebody around, so. Yeah.
Have them submit their government letter in writing.
Yeah.
Mister to Drew?
Yeah.
Voluntary.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve let resolution number twenty-three dash zero eight, reappoint Carol McCann at Historical, Historical Architectural Reboard for a term commenced in April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three and ended April eighteen, twenty twenty-seven.
Certainly. Motion was moved and seconded to approve resolution twenty-three dash oh eight, reappointing Carol McCann to the Historic Architectural Reboard as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Carol McCann's appointed.
Item eight, public work, first turn it over, Steve.
Couple of things. Amalos Campos, we got plenty, we're, uh, actually getting a little low, but there's, uh, plenty ready to go. And residents have been coming in together, which is a good thing. Uh, yesterday we were able to squeeze a little more roadside cleanup in, so we were able to get Camon Road, Philmont and Pine Road, which were pretty bad. So that was, uh, good. Uh, I don't know if anyone knows, uh, Philmont Avenue at Manor, uh, Maple, Fisher and the next maiden. Uh, I mentioned, I think it was a few months back, that Penn Dot's going to come in for their road safety. They put yellow lines and stop boards on our side streets, plus some additional signage on Philmont. So when you're coming around the bend there. So that, that was a Penn Dot, uh, road project. Chris and I met at the Republic, I think we went over that before about our future trash, so we'll be coming up on that. Um, H B A, everyone knows that the parts are packed now with, uh, baseball, soccer, basketball at the gym. I think they're starting to lead down at two, so it's, uh, it's a good thing.
For everyone that doesn't know, this Saturday is opening day with the parade and, uh, yours truly, Steve is throwing out the first pitch.
I'm honored to throw the first pitch, I expect everyone to be there.
It starts at nine thirty and after it builds up around first pitch, it's H B A, ten fifteen, ten thirty.
Uh, Chris and Tim and I were contacted by, uh, the Penny Pack about a program to maybe retrofit one of our basins. So it's something we're looking into that's, uh, grant funded by, uh, the Penny Pack and, and their people. So it, it, it might be a really good first stormwater project for us to, to get into, which will be nice. Um, we picked up our beverage degrees next week, as Denise mentioned, and we'll be planning next Thursday and Friday. Anything else?
Thank you.
I was going to do an update on the Opti system thing in my report, but Tim, do you want to do it thirty seconds on that now so when I can do it later?
Yeah, recall that, uh, under our N S four permit that we received from the Department of Rural Protection. We have an obligation to improve water quality, to reduce pollutants in the Penny Pack and Hines Valley Water Sheds. Uh, we've given a number of projects to D P that we think will help promote cleaner water. One of the projects we pointed out was Longview Lake Basin. Uh, it is a kind of one of those legacy basins that doesn't have a lot of impact on stormwater improvements for water quality, rate reduction, all those kinds of things. And so we've always had that basin targeted. Now in conjunction with Penny Pack Conservancy, we really do have an opportunity to make some improvement in that basin. And, and a good first project toward, uh, you know, our M S four out. This system that Penny Pack is working with us on has the ability to remotely, um, manage the size of the waterway opening on the basin so that in low-flow conditions, we can hold more water for a longer period in that pond. Our water quality, more infiltration, um, in event of a severe storm, that orifice would open and we would be more in flood control mode than we would be in water quality. But it seems really interesting and we're very important.
Um, so just the things that I wanted the board to be aware of. So the, the grant opportunity for that is, I think, the Penny Pack Trust have gotten in contact from the Center for Watershed Protection. I think that's the right series. And what, what it is.
Yes.
Um, so it's, it's like a hundred thousand dollar investment on, on their part. So it was their relationship with Perk on a project in another area fell apart. Um, Chris Mendel thought of us, um, and we coordinated these meetings. The other thing I want the board to be aware of, in our newly created stormwater fund, which is starting to generate revenues this year. Um, we have monies that are allocated for doing this sort of design work. So based off of that being allocated in the budget, I authorized him to begin the design work. Because in order for us to turn this around and actually make this happen, it might need to happen as soon as this fall. Um, or at least know exactly what we're doing by then. So doing the, the, that design work will be helpful, uh, in coordinating with the people from, uh, the watershed protection and with her to make sure that we actually take advantage of this.
Will this impact the people on Longview Avenue?
Well, they will be having a different experience. So, uh, today that is, uh, a very old school detention basin. It's kind of low-flow channeling, it's a low. Um, tomorrow, we, we have a naturalized basin, there will be wetland grasses, there'll be plunge pools, there'll be, beandering, uh, flow pass through basin. So it's going to be looking more like a, a natural meadow than it does in low flow.
And when we did the communication, really, uh, we, we done with the board a while ago, but then with the authority to create the fee this year. We talked a lot about the pollution reduction plan, all of those basin retrofits. All of those are going to create different experiences for the residents and businesses that are near those basins. Because essentially when people know. Because essentially, when people know that's the 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 stormwater features that have been there for decades at this point. They do not do the things that we are required to do now for from a water quality perspective. Um so a big component of this is communication to those neighbors. Um so we've talked about that as well as part of this project. Once we kind of know what the design is going to look like, um reaching out early and often so that they understand how this feature is going to change. Um at at their property uh or near their property. And uh I I guess it makes sense. We we didn't want to lose out on this opportunity to leverage that technology. Uh so that kind of expedited this one project, but that's definitely a part of it, just to reach out to neighbors.
So Tim, that'll help catch the water upstream before it goes down.
Correct.
Everything that you need. Teaching us.
Yes. Remember it's a road.
And if we can put these in fifteen different locations around town for several million dollars, we could start to see a measurable. But this will be the first example of what we might be able to.
We'll take it. Thank you.
And that concludes Steve's report.
Next item on my typically. Application twenty-three dash zero two, the application for citizen community bank fifteen South Main Street, man to OPA. Received permission to replace and reface existing former Huntington Valley Bank signs at twenty-six seventeen hundred. With the following, reface entry sign, reface ATM sign, drive-on tower sign. Do not enter slash thank you sign. Do not enter sign. The saw sign, Red Line Road. The board recommends the issuance of a certificate of appropriateness for this application. Do you want to ask if there's any questions for each one or just or ask them both?
It do, we can do them individually because this is the only one that requires it.
Okay. Any questions on the refacing of the sides of the old Huntington Valley Bank?
I have a question from Bob. Is Huntington Valley Bank gone out of that?
It is from that, but.
So it's a it's just a new bank coming in now?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Any questions from the public?
Bill, when they change the faces, are they changing the the illumination of the bulbs? I mean. Well, no, it's a big point, not for me, but for people who drive by. If they put greater bulbs, it's gonna interfere with.
This just says refacing, so I'm assuming they're just changing the face. That's why it's L E D system or anything.
So their their obligations would be that so this to Commissioner Pace's point. This is uh the hard review for the sign design. Um any of the other changes, they'll. Need to go through Bob's office for a zoning permit, so they would need to comply with the zoning ordinance, which would have those requirements.
No other questions on Zoom, I guess? See the actual motion.
We do not have a recommended motion in box number. So it would just be a a motion to uh. To approve the certificate of appropriateness.
I'd like to make a motion for twenty-three dash oh two, certificate of appropriateness for Huntington Valley Bank.
Second.
Uh motion is approved to issue the certificate of appropriateness for application. Twenty-three oh two as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion uh any opposed? No opposed, motion's passed. Thank you.
Next item on twenty-three dash zero three, the application of Constantine Bychok and. Elizabetha. Saka Skyed, apologize. Six fifty-one Red Line Road, seek permission to construct a water room addition next to the kitchen with surrounding deck and rear inside yards. The board finds the site plan and construction drawings inadequate and not professionally prepared. Setbacks are not provided. The proposed material is not provided. Paint colors are not shown anywhere. Windows are closed. The applicant was also not in attendance. As such, the board does not recommend the issuing of a certificate of appropriateness at this time. Questions from the board for the applicant?
Information we're sold that one. I mean, it was it's hard to see the drawing on the tablet.
It is definitely difficult to see the drawing because they didn't provide.
And then they didn't call, so. Oh, the draw was for the other name. Okay. They didn't come to the meeting. They didn't provide anything.
Yeah, yeah, it was. The board could not agree with any of it all.
So there was nothing. Okay. All right.
All right.
All right.
Item G.
Don't even motion like that.
We're not denying. There's there's just nothing.
There's nothing.
There you go.
Liaison is the hard, there's nothing new to report other than the reappointment of Karen McCann, we already did.
Okay.
And that.
That's it. Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Next, Chair recognizes Joe Canaly, Chair of the Public Safety Committee.
All right. First item on my agenda is the Huntington Valley Library lease agreement. We'll turn that over to Chris for a brief summary.
Sure. So this will be a very quick summary. Uh the terms of the lease are identical to what we had uh for at least the last uh term. Um so it's just proposing to continue with those existing terms, which are their occupancy of all of the spaces that you know as the Huntington Valley Library. And including the community room. Uh that would be for a term of three years and it provides for one extension year. Um so that would take us to twenty twenty-six, potentially twenty twenty-seven. Um and that timing aligns well with the township's current facilities.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? No. Make a motion to approve the new lease for the lease term for the Huntington Valley Library, second.
Motion was moved and seconded to approve the new lease terms for the Huntington Valley Libraries described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, the motion's passed. Thank you, everyone.
The next uh item on my agenda is that on PD personnel matter. As we stated in the beginning of the meeting, we met in executive session prior to this meeting. A motion to approve the settlement terms and disciplinary matter involving Sergeant John Pascal. Uh I'm gonna call for a motion to approve. Second.
The motion was moved and seconded to approve the settlement terms for the disciplinary matter involving Sergeant John Pascal. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Dr. Sarkin, please note Dr. Sarkin is gonna be accusing stuff. There was no opposed, so the motion's passed. Thank you.
Right. Next item on my agenda is the Huntington Valley Fire, the Fire Company Fire Police Appointment. Uh we received the the attached request from Huntington Valley Fire Company, Kathy Moore to serve as a member of the fireplace. Uh background check was performed by the police department and they're comfortable with recommending her appointment. Is there any questions from the public? From the board. Motion to appoint Kathy Moore as a member of the fireplace, I will make.
Second.
The motion was moved and seconded to appoint Kathy Moore as a member of the fireplace. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed?
Nope.
The motion's carried. Congratulations.
For the uh month's police department report, um we did have one assault that occurred on Tomlinson Road. Uh right at our border with Philadelphia back in uh mid-March. We had six drug-involved arrests, seven DUIs over the last month. Two firearms violations. Our officers made four warrant arrests from other jurisdictions, of which were. Uh three of the four went back to Bucks County. And as far as community policing updates, um our department. In case you saw on the news, there's been reports of um issues with the ability to steal vehicles, specifically Kias and Hyundai's. So those companies have provided wheel locks, the old-fashioned uh, you know, what was that called?
The club.
The club. Yeah. Yes. So we have the clubs that we had donated to the police department. We're giving them out to any residents that have those type of cars, uh so you can come by the police station. We did check and they pretty much fit any other car. So if you're worried about it, come in and we'd be happy to provide one to you. I gave one to the manager for his uh. Our LMBD officers, me included, uh did Dr. Sousay at the Pine Road School where we read. Uh school stories to the small children in school. It was a lot of fun. It was a great experience. We did several days. We probably had about ten officers participate. Um in addition, we had a uh. Uh sex offense from two thousand and twenty-two, where there's inappropriate contact between an adult and a juvenile female. Uh um you can see the amount of time it takes to investigate a crime like that. However, a subject was arrested for unlawful contact with a minor, corruption of a minor, and dissemination of sexually explicit material to a minor. Uh that occurred this month. So we're talking about a fourteen-month investigation. Um so these are the. Uh priority items from last month's police department activity. If anybody has any questions.
Any questions from the board? Anything from the public? Thank you, Chief.
Evening Commissioners. Uh Fire Company on Tuesday, March twenty-first, uh with the police department. We uh spoke at Career Day at Little One High School and spoke to, I guess, about touch two hundred students. And we just talked about fire EMS and police. We could have that, we could have that well received with the the sessions. Um we had a hazardous material incident on Monday, March thirtieth. Uh we had something that was in the. The Valley Swim Club in a long time. So road and one of the public works department helped us out with that. And notified DP as samples were taken. Um the East Montgomery County Emergency Management Group. Uh has been working or will be working this next couple of months with the mutual aid agreements among each township and borough. Uh we have to start updating contact lists. We have some new. Companies that want to come in on this. So we're looking at as far as uh mutually between fire, police, EMS, public works. Uh drones, hazmat. So that'll be, that's in the works as we speak right now. Hopefully, we'll have a new agreement by the end of the summer. And just also, uh UNOs are back up. Working out with chill and a lot of the UNO inspections. And just one last thing, um. We have ADT came in. We'll have a new alarm system. Hopefully, it'll be installed and it'll be finished by the end of April. And that will be the new fire alarm system, uh just about completed and the test should be done in a week or two and then. Uh it'll be on the month.
Any questions, special commissioners from public? Thank you, Fire Marshal. All right, that takes me to my liaison reports. My first liaison report is for the Huntington Valley Library. Commissioner Pace already stole my thunder without me paying. That's this Saturday.
Who's throwing the first pitch?
I believe it's gonna be Steve Warner, Director of Public Works. Looking forward to it. Hope you can be there. Chief, I know you wanted to, but. With that being said, I was up to the park this week for the Easter night hunt. Get a couple up there. You guys are doing an awesome job getting ready. The new dugouts look absolutely amazing. Everybody participated in that and looking forward to a great baseball season. Should be fun for all the kids. Uh my second report is for the Huntington Valley Library and let me just pull that up real quick. Uh the library would also like to thank all the township public work employees for their help with the twenty twenty-three. Ed Hook. It was a huge success. Ton of kids. I know my kids were timeouts. Last year they get to participate and they had a blast. As did everybody else. Uh the library will open their annual fairy tale trail at the Lormon Park on Sunday, April twenty-third, with a ribbon coming up. The story will remain up for one week. The library board of trustees meeting will be on Thursday, April thirteenth at seven thirty P M. In the library community room or the Zoom RSVP for the Zoom link with hands on. On Thursday, April twentieth at seven P M, Steve Pollock will present Weber versus Sodium, Sodium. This event will take place in the community room. Monday, April twenty-fourth at seven P M, Sherry Alstraw will present. Fanning the spark process of writing. This program will be presented via Zoom. Please RSVP for a link. And on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth at seven P M, adult social group will need to play a board game, I'm the gap. Come out and meet your neighbors. We'll have fun. RSVP and light refreshments will be served. All events can be found on the library website at HBlibrary.org. That's all I have. I have to move back to Commissioner Kurtz.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Canaly. Next, Chair recognizes Commissioner Christopher Odor, Chair of Ordinance.
Thank you. Uh first is the traffic-related ordinances issues. Um the April-October agendas. Are reserved to review any traffic-related ordinance recommendations based upon studies completed by our Traffic Safety Unit. This month has one completed report with a recommendation, but there are a few other items to possibly act on. Uh first is stop signs at Lincoln Drive at, a stop on Lincoln Drive and Walsh Road. The board received through the Traffic Safety Unit's recommendation to restrict left turns from Inverness Lane on Walsh Road. Further review identified that there is no stops on Lincoln Drive at Walsh Road with the expected increase of local traffic in this intersection. Traffic Safety Unit analyzed whether a stop sign would be warranted per the manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices standard. Any one of the three criteria can be used as a basis for installing a stop sign. Uh those. Criteria are, one, the through-street's particular volume exceeds six thousand vehicles per day, which this does. Number two is a restricted view exists, which could be due to local landscaping as well. And third is crash data supports it and fortunately, the crash data does not support it. Basically, meaning vehicular volume criteria is recommended the board add this stop sign to ordinance. So a sign may be erected and forced. Go on, next one or do a motion?
I think you go to the next one.
All right. Now, also is a stop sign at Jefferson Lane at Walsh Road. This recommendation caused them to look at the existing list of stop signs in the area. While a sign exists, the sign at Jefferson Lane, Walsh Road was never ordained. Therefore, is recommended that this sign also be added to the ordinance since the same vehicular volume standard is. Third is the speed limit on Buck Road between Byberry Road and Burnath and Borough Boundary. Chief Grotto and Andrew Hoffman received a letter from the Borough requesting the township consider reducing the speed limit on Buck Road. Between Byberry Road and the Borough of Braden Boundary. From the Borough Boundary through Huntington Pike. The, which is a breath, and the speed limit reduces twenty-five miles per hour. While we do not have a completed report from the Traffic Safety Unit yet. Uh is recommended the board authorize advertising the speed limit reduction if. The Traffic Safety Unit actually recommends doing so and the majority of board of commissioners is comfortable with this request. That's mouthful. Any comments or questions from the board?
So they're just stop signs at Jefferson and.
Lincoln.
And Lincoln, nothing.
Yeah, then you have the.
Reduce the speed of the twenty-five.
Right. If the TSU.
And if the board is comfortable with.
Without getting their results.
I thought I waited until we hear.
So I was trying to not waste money and advertise two separate ordinances. So one, I guess, starting with the 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 board side of it, if there's any either strong opinion of really wanting to see the report one way or the other. Um or whether or not there's a thought that just, even though the request has been made, that it's not one that we agree with. Um then we could drop that from uh the potential motion. Um or if generally the board was comfortable with whatever the Traffic Safety Unit recommended. Then the the way that I had crafted a sample motion was to create some space that if the the report comes back shortly. With the recommendation that there's no reason to not drop it, then we could include that in that same ordinance.
And we're talking about about a hundred yards, right? Hundred fifty yards.
The rest of it's already twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's essentially from Byberry Road to past, so it comes.
Yeah.
They let away the week to do the study because of the holiday weekend and school being out, so they're starting to study now.
Do you know what the basis of Braden's request was?
Uh they did do some data collection from that speed sign that everyone sees there. And that did show a high percentage above the posted speed limit to agree that would warrant uh the speed issue. That's affecting them. And it comes down from that hill out of Lowermoreland. That's all a small segment that is the higher speed where they would have to reduce from. So they think that this will help them eliminate some of the speeding down that hill. I personally don't have a strong opinion one way or another. I just wait for the data collection from our unit and their recommendation. And I'd be comfortable if they recommend one way or the other.
Can we eliminate this on the next review if we prove it to not correct? That way, it's all advertised together, public can deny the ordinance.
Yes, because if if you redo that, if you, if it's advertised, but you want to remove a portion. That works. If you wanted to advertise without it and add it, that version. So what you're suggesting.
Any questions or comments from the public? With that, I make a motion to authorize advertising ordinance adding stop signs at the Lincoln Drive at Jefferson Lane intersection with Walsh Road. And reducing the speed limit to twenty-five miles per hour on Buck Road, the Byberry Road and the Bratham Boundary. Provided the Traffic Safety Unit recommends doing so.
Second. Motion was moved and seconded to authorize advertising the ordinance as stated by Commissioner Oder. All those in favor, please say. Say, say no.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? Motion's passed. Any questions?
Okay, next is the zoning hearing board. There are two applicants, two applications for the April zoning hearing board agenda. One is application number twenty-three dash oh two, the application of Virginia and Ryan and Overburger of fifty-one Welsh Road. We seek variances to permit the reduction of the minimum forty-foot front yard setback to twenty-nine feet, two inches. An increase of the twenty-five percent lot coverage to thirty-three point two percent. And an increase of the accessory structure height from fifteen feet to eighteen feet to a construction of a detached two-car garage. This is a corner property on Welsh and Kent on the Lowermoreland Philadelphia Boundary. Second is the application, the application number twenty-two dash nineteen. The continuation of the application of Artac Agarian for the property at one zero six Byberry Road. The existing special exception application to permit in existing building facility for the elderly has been modified to include a variance request to permit private utilities. In December, the board authorized solicitor rights for a letter reminding the zoning hearing board and applicant of the public utility requirement. And in March, the board authorized solicitor rights for a letter noting the board's opposition in to this variance request. There were no decisions rendered at the March hearing. Next is my liaison report, which is the Penny Pack Ecological Restoration Trust. Uh on April twenty-second at eight thirty A M is their five K slash one mile trail run-walk. Good time and get your heart pumping. Get some exercise and enjoy the outdoors. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Oder. Next, the chair recognizes our real chair, Dr. David Serkin. Oh, Commissioner. I'm sorry. Next chair recognizes Commissioner Ruth Halsen. There we go. Are you next? You're next, Ruth.
I guess I am.
There you are.
Okay, well, the
I'm sorry, Ruth.
The Lowermoreland Township Authority is actually meeting tomorrow night, so I will have you know, a summary for next month. And the building, though, for appeals, I've never met him.
Lifetime yet.
In your
Tenure.
In your tenure.
Um and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Halsen. And I'm sorry. Next chair recognizes our wheelchair after David Serkin, Chair of Huntington Law Affairs Committee. I sure can, Doc. And as you heal, I'm trying to fill your shoes. Uh first item on Dr. Serkin's agenda interview and consider minutes of March fourteen, twenty twenty-three. Are there any questions regarding the minutes? From the board? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the March fourteen, twenty twenty-three minutes.
Second.
Okay, the motion was, the motion was moved and seconded to approve in March fourteen, twenty twenty-three. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? And then so passed. Thank you. Next is review and consider our April twenty twenty-three bill list. Are there any questions regarding the bill list? Okay. No questions? I'll make a motion to approve the April twenty-three bill list.
Second.
Thank you. Motion was moved and seconded to approve the April twenty twenty-three bill list. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? The motion's passed. Thank you. Next item is review and consider our Ken Comcast franchise agreement. Chris, do you want to go over that real quick?
Sure. So um through the Montgomery County Consortium of Communities, uh the board had authorized uh Cohen Law Group to represent Lowermoreland as well as, I think, sixteen or seventeen other municipalities uh in our negotiations for our expiring franchise agreement with Comcast. Um so in your packet is a uh very extensive summary of those negotiations, but the really kind of simple uh summary of this is that it maintains the current terms that we've had with Comcast for the last decade. Um this new agreement is for ten years, um which compared to the Verizon Agreement, which was for five. Uh this will prevent us from having to go back into this well again. Um and essentially, when the original Comcast infrastructure was run through the community, there's uh federal standards. Um and uh I guess a federal basis for all municipalities entering these agreements with uh these utility providers. And allows a fee uh to to be charged to Comcast um for providing the service throughout the community. And then there's certain performance standards um and guarantees of service that they have to 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 have. Um and then the very minor, especially now, uh added benefit is that we are able to have free standard definition TV service in certain municipal facilities. Um so if you ever want to watch some terrible-looking Philly games during the day, uh please come to our
We might take you up on that.
So a- all of that said, um there is a resolution in your packet, which is number twenty-three dash zero nine, um that would approve uh this agreement for signature.
Does the board have any other questions for a manager? Does the public have any questions for a manager regardless? Anyone on Zoom? Okay. With that being said, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash oh nine, approving our Comcast franchise agreement as described by Manager Hoffman.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is moved and seconded to approve uh Resolution twenty-three oh nine as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? Thank you. The motion is passed. Uh next um is review and consider the opioid settle settlement authorization. Uh Manager Hoffman, could you just go over that real quick? Because that's pretty cotton dry.
Yes, so I'll do that real quick. And then EJ, if you don't mind, I'm giving solicitor rights just in case there's anything more to add. But um you may recall that uh the board had done two resolutions probably about a year ago. Um as these first settlement agreements with uh distributors and manufacturers of uh different opioid uh medications have been reached. So uh between the solicitor and my emails over the last couple of weeks, we've gotten uh dozens of emails that are coming through requesting our signature to add uh Lowermoreland to the 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 most recent settlement agreement, which had been reached, um which involves Teva. Going to guess allergic, but that sounds like it might be wrong. C V S, Walgreens, and Walmart. Um so since we had done the resolutions last time, I didn't want to just sign off on this without the board's authorization. Um so we're requesting a motion uh to authorize my signature as part of this most recent settlement. There's no direct funds that will come to Lowermoreland Township. Um but it will help add to the pot that will come into Montgomery County, which in the future will fund uh different programs that the county health department will be able to offer. John, anything to add?
Uh just that the the deadline on um the documents being signed, Chris and I have both been receiving DocuSign um documents, which basically say, yes, we want to participate. Uh but the deadline is April eighteenth, so that's got to be done by the, it's got to be signed off on by the end of the week. Uh all the counties are dealing with this sort of on an individual basis and the states involved. I've been trying to find out how much money came into Montgomery County last time. I haven't yet. I don't think received an accurate number. I can tell you that sixty-five million uh came into Delaware County on the first settlement, and there's thirty-some million coming in on the second settlement. These are class action suits that were brought by states. Uh one of whom is Pennsylvania. And you know, they want the largest municipalities to sign off on this because if if they don't sign off, there's a penalty. There's less money that comes in, so uh no direct funding to Lowermoreland. Um but there's a substantial amount of money. I know in Delaware County, it's being paid out over eighteen years. Uh I don't know what Montgomery County has done. Um but most counties have set up a committee or um something internally to manage the money because there's strings to the money. It can only be used for uh drug, alcohol, mental health programming. So there there's some I guess, flow-down benefit to Lowermoreland if that programming occurs for Lowermoreland residents, but the counties are taking the money and then administering it on a county-wide basis, so um as Denise said, this is pretty cut and dry. It's really a no-brainer. Um all we have to do is have Manager Hoffman sign off.
And then I'll finally stop receiving those emails.
Great. Does anyone else have any questions for our manager or solicitor? Okay, questions? I will make a motion to authorize the township manager to sign this national opioid settlement agreement as described. Sorry. Motion is moved and seconded, authorize the manager to sign the opioid settlement agreement. Subscribe this evening. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? No opposed? The motion's passed. Thank you for it. Uh next, under Dr. Serkin's agenda is the administration report. Manager Hoffman, would you like to highlight anything?
Sure, just a few more items to call out. Um so the first was I wanted to let the board know that today, um through uh our sewer engineer, Mike McCree. We did finally receive some Co-Stars-based quotes for relining uh in the the Betters Pump Station area. Um that was the area where we had the exceedance in our contract with Philadelphia. So we had televised and inspected lines going all the way back Philmon Avenue. Um so uh we received, I think, three proposals, and the lowest of which is from a company that we've used often um in the amount of a hundred thirty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars. This is something that we will be funding with our allocation of the ARPA funds. Um an allocation uh generally for this was included in the twenty twenty-three budget. Um so we will be authorizing uh Mike to have the contract documents prepared so that we can get going on that uh as soon as possible. Uh we meet twice a year with Philadelphia Water Department to provide updates um on what we're doing to try to reduce exceedances. Um so so far, we've been telling them how we're studying this, so it'll be nice the next time we need to actually tell them that we've implemented something. Um the next one was just wanted to let the board know that our chief of emergency services position, which is being hired in conjunction uh with Bratham Borough, um that job is going to be advertised this week. Um we are using a third-party recruiting firm called Gov HR to help with that recruiting process. So uh and we'll have the the advertisement go out. Um the applications will be accepted for about a month, so we're looking at about mid-May. Um and we'll receive our completed product uh from Gov HR, which will have all of the applications in a matrix, um that is reviewed. I mean, uh all of those uh resumes against the requirement of the job description. And once we have that document, that will allow us to build out our local interview process that will probably include first and second rounds um to hopefully have that position hired starting sometime this summer. Um so awesome progress on that. Um and then last thing, just staying in that fire field, EJ and I received an email today um from like a communications firm that is working with uh the Monco Fire Chiefs Association um for recruitment of volunteer firefighters. Um so they've put together some uh promotional materials to hopefully get people interested in volunteering. Um so we are going to uh provide some small assistance with uh their promotional materials. Uh different formats for that. So just wanted the board to be aware that that had come as well. That's what I have for this evening, unless there's any questions.
Thank you so much, Manager Hoffman.
Uh two things to share. One is that uh our audit, there's two components to our audit every year. One is a D C D report that is strictly numbers that we submit to the state. That's usually due April first, um although it's a soft deadline, most municipalities don't do that just because it's just sorry, can you speak a little? I'm sorry. Um there's two components to our audit. One is the D C E D audit that is due to the state on April first. Um which is just strictly numbers of just, you know, where we started, where we ended, what our rankings and expenditures were. And that was completed and submitted to the state on time. Um the next component of our audit is our more in-depth financial report. That usually takes several more months. It usually isn't available until summer at the earliest. And that's the more um in-depth and several hundred pages. That usually is what we submit to our bondholders and such. Um so that's the next phase that we're currently working on. Um so as soon as that's available, we'll obviously share it out with the board. Um and then the other part is this I T infrastructure update that's been ongoing since last summer. Um the next phase that we are required to do by our property liability insurance is a multi-factor authentication process for our emails, our network, any access to anything that's connected to the township's network and server has to undergo a, you know, secondary step to ensure people's IDs are accurate. Um so anyone who has a township email will be affected. I will do my best to provide timely information on how to access your email when you get a pop-up that says you need to do X, Y, and Z. Um there might be some frustration, but we'll work through it to make sure we get through all that. But again, this is just to make sure that there's secondary six level of security to make us less susceptible to hacking that, you know, obviously our liability insurers doesn't want us to under that, so. That will be coming up in the next few weeks.
And really, this is a a kind of expensive and broad way to say just from now on, just call Steve.
It's just too Thank you, Assistant Manager EJ. Uh next is our tax collector's report. Sure, that's a little bit, Commissioner.
So one of the grants that you you reported on is the Monco twenty forty grant.
Yes.
Uh for sidewalk construction. Um that is on Byberry, but just near the Penny Pack Trail?
Yes, it's so that it can eventually connect to the Penny Pack Trail.
Yep, okay. So do we have streets identified where it will be? I mean, you know, what
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's from Heaton Road to, why am I always forgetting the wash? Not much. Yes.
So we talked about that as a project concept back when the toll development was being proposed. Um and so they had posted funds for that as an off-site improvement. Um the board had ended up prioritizing some other projects in the interim. So now that we've gotten those complete, um we have brought in Anton from McMahon last summer to go through everything that had some amount of planning to it. Um and to run priorities by the board. Um so that was the one that uh from the culmination of uh what was presented was the first priority given this month that had been posted. Um so that's that's where that
Would that be on the north or south side of Byberry if you're going?
North. On the on the side of the homes, of like of the old Justic Farm development, not on the toll side. Because essentially what that does from anywhere within Justic Farm at that point, from Walsh, you're able to get out to Byberry Road where there will now be sidewalk. That will take you all the way down to Heaton where there is a marked uh signal crossing, which would then take you into the toll development, and you would be able to kind of traverse your way uh on the connector road down Creek uh to to safely get to the track. So it 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 really, it it provides a safe connection once you're out to Byberry for pretty much all of Justic Farm.
Okay, I got a request uh to uh for sidewalks even further up Byberry. Is there any plans, a place for any more sidewalks on Byberry or not?
So I recommend maybe we revisit that presentation from McMahon. So I recommend maybe we revisit that presentation from McMahon at a point after we get this next batch of progress done. Um, at, at this point, uh depending on where you're asking about, uh really, we've talked about Byberry, the area of Buck Road to be able to make some connections that go down uh Buck. But in terms of things that we have heard about and have put onto that list for prioritization discussions each budget, here with the board, I don't know that I've heard anything else about.
And there are a lot of accidents on Byberry that's, you know, I think sidewalks, you know, might be helpful. Thank you.
Jane's not back yet, so I'm not sure.
We heard she in her office. Thank you.
Okay, she just unmuted. I think she's here.
Is our tax collectors' report?
I still have people calling.
Oh, great. Hi, Jenny.
Hi, everyone. So let's see, I have to get the right paper. So for collections, um as of the end of March, we're at twenty-seven percent of the face collected. The discount due date is this Friday and the uh both payments from Square Logic came in today for three-point-three million dollars. So we're well on our way to appreciating most of the taxes by the end of April. So are there any questions?
Any questions from the board for Chase? Any questions from the public for Chase? There are non-Chaseable except
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work. Uh, next is Dr. Serkins liaison report. Um, the Civil Service Commission. There's no meeting and nothing to report. I mean, he's open hell. And the Lower Moreland Township School District, uh Dr. Serkins continues to attend meetings via Zoom except I believe they had a meeting this evening, so he could not attend because we're here. And that concludes his agenda items for this evening. Um, right now, we will open this up for public participation on non-agenda items. Would anyone like to address the board? If so, please come up to the podium. It's in your name and address for the record.
Steve Geiger, eight-twenty Broadmore Road. And then most of you on the board. So good evening to the Lower Moreland Township Board of Commissioners. Uh, as you, as some of you may know, I've been a resident of the township for more than fifty years. A couple of years ago, the township added pickleball courts to Abadell's Park's tennis court renovation. And in doing so, without communicating upfront with nearby homeowners. So my backyard is directly behind the courts, about fifty feet away from the fencing. And any change to the plan would impact me in one way or another. Unfortunately, however, the loud percussive popping sounds and screaming by the players seriously negatively impacts my family and it deprives us of the peaceful enjoyment of our home. Before installing the pickleball courts, um a simple internet search would have revealed that the pickleball noise has become a divisive issue in many communities, often leading to litigation. Despite the noise mitigation efforts you did last year, i.e. the acoustic fence and the gate locks, the noise problem is not lessened. It's the same. The screens don't stop the sound from traveling over the fence. And that just goes right up into the air. So these courts are just simply too close to nearby homes to be suitable for outdoor play. In similar situations taking place throughout the country, which I'll talk about in a minute, acoustic fence and playing time restrictions are only considered Band-Aids to the real problem. The real problem is the noise. And it is too loud and obnoxious to any homeowners living within a hundred and fifty yards from the courts. So I'm asking the township, knowing that, you know, there's a serious noise problem with them, to take action and be a responsible neighbor. A responsible neighbor, in my opinion, would either move them or cover them. Cover them all four sides. So I ask that you recognize that despite the good idea, the best intentions, the unintended consequences of the problem, the noise problem, far outweigh the public's access to this activity. So I'm asking you to develop a plan to find a more suitable home for these courts. I'm asking you to hit the reset button. So let me go over some of the other simple things, and I have copies for you as well. I made copies for uh you. In Chestnut Hill in Philadelphia, not far away, six pickleball courts went up recently and the neighbors immediately complained about the noise. The result is playing time got reduced from one PM to eight PM Monday through Friday, nine to five on Saturday, and no Sundays or holidays. So one neighbor in, in the article, which I'm going to share with you, said that pickleball smacks all day just drains the energy out of you. Some neighbors are still not content with stopping here and most think they got the raw end of the deal and want them taken down permanently. One resident who was a lawyer is threatening a lawsuit against the city and citing excessive noise for this, the, the, that, the, the, that violates city laws. This person used a decibel meter to measure the sound and found out it was four times the legal limit. She says, I'm not going to be able to work from home, given the situation. So she's prepared to take legal action. If the city won't move them, another neighbor said, unfortunately I have no other recourse when nothing changes. So that's when you go that route. So this story came out in October of twenty-twenty-two and it's quite frankly, still up in the air. It's not finished. Another story in Vienna, Virginia, the town council voted to restrict playing times after neighbors grew tired of the thousands of hard-peak sounds made every day. The schedule in those courts is now Monday, Wednesday, Friday from nine AM to seven and Saturday from nine to one. No Sundays. This schedule is from March to November. They have another schedule December through February, which is ten AM to five PM, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and ten to one on Saturday. The council's looking into other locations. Unlike Chestnut Hill, which has dedicated courts, Vienna, Virginia has tennis courts that were lined with pickleball. And that, again, story came out in February. Another story that I found in nearby Euclid Township, which is around Exton, the line of the YCA is considering a plan to close a pool and cover it with concrete and asphalt to make way for a new multipurpose facility, which will include pickleball. One resident, a longtime pickleball and tennis instructor and mechanical engineer, batted a ball around while demonstrating the noise residents living as close to a hundred and fifty feet might experience. He says it's a unique sound and very annoying to those not playing. The decision to put pickleball courts should be illegal, he told the town council. And then a petition was signed with there were two hundred people opposed to the project. So ladies and gentlemen, I've lived in my house for twenty-eight years. My wife has lived in the house for fifty years. And I can tell you, there is nothing we experienced over our time here that comes even close to the pop, 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 pop sound from pickleball. It's in a category, category all by itself. The decibel level of pickleball is unlike anything other activity in the park and the people scream a lot too. And quite frankly, the screaming is worse than soccer games and baseball games and ten times the worst of tennis. Even with the windows closed in my house, I still hear the popping and screaming sounds loudly clear. The windows don't help. The noises that we park residents are used to, like I mentioned before, are tennis, soccer, baseball games, parents with children playing at the playground, people walking their dogs, dogs barking. These sounds are what we park neighbors call our white noise. Occasionally, a soccer game or baseball game or tennis game can be loud, yes. But it's not even close to the pickleball because it's not a high-pitched popping sound that drives you up a wall. So I came into the township building last December. I met with Chris and Steve. I asked them if this sound violated any noise ordinance and they said, no, it didn't. And, you know, I wish it did. Didn't really sit well with me because there really should be an ordinance in place that prevents any park activity, whatever it is, from violating a family's peaceful enjoyment of their home. So I'd call that the good neighbor ordinance. If we could create one, I would call it the good neighbor ordinance. So I completely agree with the statements I just read to you from Chestnut Hill, Vienna, Virginia, and Euclid Township. And, you know, I'm here to say I want relief now. I've waited and lived with this nuisance for three years. And all I ask is that we have equality or a light back the way it was before these courts were at. So one more article I mentioned before I closed my remarks is an article in CNN that came out in March. The article titled Pickleball is America's Fastest Grown Sport. These People Hate It. Several communities are mentioned in this article, including Falmouth, Massachusetts. Another town, but it's the same story. A resident sold his home there and moved after the town's recreation department built pickleball courts three-hundred-and-fifty feet from his home in a residential area. The resident and group of neighbors eventually filed a lawsuit claiming the pickleball courts violated the town's bylaws prohibiting daily injurious and obnoxious noise levels. And the noise was substantially impacting their quiet and peaceful enjoyment of their respect and stones. They want a temporary injunction and the courts are currently closed. The resident who sold his house said it's a tough sell to be against pickleball. But at the end of the day, it was creating mental and physical health problems with neighbors butting heads. So the CNN article also references a New York City playground where a petition was filed to ban the activity. Um, the children have been squeezed out and many neighbors have, and many have stopped going to the playground altogether. And um it's the same playground, I believe, highlighted in Brian Gumbel's HBO Real Sports program on these, in HBO that aired last December, which I told some of you to watch. It's the same court. The result of the petition was that New York City banned the pickleball court from the playground. And then in one final mention of the CNN article, of the comments made by a gentleman named Bob Unitek. Uh, he's quoted several times. Mr. Unitek is an engineer by training who started a pickleball sound mitigation consulting firm advising municipalities on reducing noise. Mr. Unitek said that cities should not simply convert tennis courts to pickleball courts. Mr. Unitek is also a trained pickleball referee and an avid player. He says the pitch of pickleball hits is more annoying than a tennis racket with strings and a soft tennis ball. If courts are built near homes, they should block sound barriers, enforce the use of quieter paddle and balls, and restrict the playing hours. I'm an advocate of pickleball, he says, but if it's right across the street from people's homes, it's quite a problem. His last quote in the article is, "The right solution is often to put the courts someplace else." So again, I have copies of all these articles for you. I'm going to conclude my comments with, with this. I see only two options where pickleball could peacefully coexist in Lower Moreland Township. One is to find a location that is far enough away from homes. And the other is to cover them with a roof if they are not far enough away. It's that simple. Hiring a full-time park monitor to ensure the use of quieter paddles and balls is just not going to be feasible here. Restricting playing time only punishes tennis players. And don't, don't forget tennis courts have been in the park since inception. Tennis players should not be locked out of the courts because of pickleball. Commissioners, it's time to acknowledge that adding those courts in that location was a mistake. It's a popular activity, but the idea wasn't vetted enough upfront. And you did not give nearby homeowners the opportunity to weigh in beforehand, before the project was started. So I hope in the future this doesn't happen again. So I'm calling on the township to remain a good neighbor and choose one of the two options I referenced. That's all I have for this evening. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much for your comment. Does anyone, does anyone else like to address?
Well. David Binder, eighty-five-six Broadmore Road. Thanks. I'd like to uh support what Steve Geiger just said. Uh, we're neighbors. I live about fifty yards away from the pickleball courts. Steve is about fifteen yards away from the pickleball courts. The, I play pickleball. I enjoy pickleball. Um, and I've lived on the park for thirty-four years and I love living on the park. The sounds don't bother me. The um, the noise that a pickleball makes is very distinctive and very distracting. I clearly hear it from, from fifty yards away. I can't imagine what it's like being uh closer to that. It's been, I'm not going to go over everything that Steve said, but it's, I think it's very valid. That it's been a problem. It's been a problem with a lot of neighborhoods, a problem with a lot of racket clubs. Um, it's, it's a, it's an upcoming sport and it's here to stay, but the, the noise is, is just, it's almost like water torture. Um, so uh with that said, I, I fully support uh Steve Geiger's proposal. And um that's all I have.
David, why don't you play at our park? Why do you and Patty choose to play somewhere else?
Well, because we know that it's, it creates a lot of noise and it just disturbs people.
So, so, so one of our own neighbors
Yeah.
who lives within steps from it decides not to play there because you know it's
Right, and yeah, it's, it's just, it's just, and I don't know about if that can be soundproofed. Uh, I don't know if that's reasonable because it's just, it's a very sharp, sharp noise that penetrates.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Is there a day in time that's worse than?
Well, the one other thing I had was, I would say, Sun, Friday, which was a holiday. Um, there was one person out there, I was wanting to bring my racket tonight. They weren't even playing pickleball. They were just going Did you hear that?
Honestly, I hear it's awful.
When's a good time to stop by? Like, I don't want to sit there all day waiting for someone to stop by.
All the time.
Oh, to hear the So since the weather turned nice this week, it's been brutal.
It's continued.
Because it's, it's, it's the contagion of pent-up demand. Everybody wanted to play in the winter time, but they didn't. Now the weather's turned, so it's been a terrible week, awful.
Now that the weather's good, yes.
Anyone else?
Laura Johnson, eight oh eight Broadmore. Um, I live right next to uh Steve Geiger. Uh, I've been a resident, I think, for fifty-five years and then twenty years at eight oh eight Broadmore. Um, I work from home, so and I do a lot of Zoom calls. Uh, I cannot be on my first floor, even with the windows closed. When they're playing, you hear it. So I have to go down to my basement and do Zoom calls because you just hear and then it is distracting. So um I support everything he says and um we were never told about it, right? So all of a sudden it just showed up and then you just start hearing it. And yeah, the winter, winter months, you don't hear it, but now I'm starting to hear it. And uh I have to move where I, where I have my Zooms because I can't, and I'm doing most of the talking, so you can hear it in the back. So that's all. Thank you.
I'm Merrell Geiger. I'm eight-twenty Broadmoor. I live with Steve Geiger and it's awful. Awful. Uh, reiterate what he said that it's really reprehensible that it happened without letting any of us know. Most, a lot of people know me, I mean, I've been, I was on the PTA for almost twenty years. I was on the HBA board, over seven years. I I'm actually on my, you know, my synagogue, you know, I'm on that executive board as well. We don't make any decisions. If it's even going to slightly affect whether it was a walk in a five K, whether it's just an event for the day, we always let the people in the community that were directly affected know expect more vehicles, expect more traffic. So the, and I grew up in this home. This is the house that I grew up in. I've been there since I was six months old. We went through all the different things with these, you know, with all the different things. And like I said, we love them. We enjoy the white noise. We enjoy the kids. We enjoy it. How this ever happened without anybody having the decency to let us know that it was going to happen? My God, it's just even if you just did the block around, like I just don't know how that ever even occurred. But anyone who would want to sit in our shoes and come and sit, you know, in our house, we can't have our windows open. Let alone, I'm outside all the time. I'm, I watch a baby. I'm a nanny. I'm, I'm out and drive three dogs. We love this community, which is why we raised our children here, why we decided to stay here. It's just awful. You know, and it's like I said, it's really unacceptable. Like Steve quoted all those different things and there's, there's cases in Florida. There's places everywhere. So many people come up to us and say, oh, my gosh, you know, I just don't know how you guys deal with it. I, I don't know. They're, they're not even near us, but they just, they just have so much empathy because it's literally is like they've said like water torture. It should have never happened. You're, it's a shame that they made that mistake because you're throwing all this money after something that never should have been there. And I just don't know how, aside from being not notified, how there wasn't any research on or any you know, looking into like what this noise would be like. It's not tennis. It's not soccer. It's not baseball. And it's almost ironic what you're saying about the winter, like it's not as much, but that, you know what? It doesn't stop these people. When they took the nets down, people put their own nets up. When there's leaves on there and they're, you know, there, the cold weather, they come out with leaf blowers and shovels and, and they just do what they want. They're not even I love, I think pickleball's great. I intend to sometime, you know, play, certainly not in somebody else. I love, I think pickleball's great. I intend to sometime, you know, play, certainly not in somebody else's backyard. We're expecting like their regular everyday life. So I just, you know, it's, it's just, you should know, like how it's not a little issue. It's a very serious issue. And again, unfortunately too, for the people who are literally, it's like on top of our backyard. So it's disappointing.
Thanks so much, Merrill.
Jill Dill, seventy-one, Broadmoor Road, Abidale. Um, I'm just here to support, you know, a fellow resident that's being impacted in the neighborhood. Uh, my kids have been there from twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, playing tennis in the courts. There wasn't a changeover. I don't think it's anybody's fault. Um, it's just that, it's just maybe a bad decision with that particular place. Um, I'm not even sure if the people that are there are residents. So that would be something that I would want to, you know, see if we could check out. There's other options where you could have an automated swipe card where a person literally pays the township a couple of dollars to use, use the, use the fields and go to potentially kid programs on and kind of narrow that base of access there. Um, so I'm sure with, with Chris, it probably went through the recreation board.
No, I'm going to take ownership of it. Merrill, I recommended this in two thousand seventeen when we were doing park improvement projects. We had talked with the county planning commission about what are popular things to add to parks. We replaced one racket-based sport with another and this decision was recommended in two thousand seventeen. And this was the implication that I just do not think that we
I, I don't think it's any
Well, the big, the big issue is it's not a racket sport. What you put in was a paddle sport. That's the key distinction. If it was a racket sport, it might be okay, Chris, but you know, in that HBO Real Sport article, Mary Carillo basically starts off by saying, if tennis and ping pong had a baby, it would be pickleball, a very loud baby. So it's a paddle.
And I don't, personally, I don't need any more explanation of it. I played it in high school in two thousand and three. So like we, I knew what this sport was.
Well, ironically too, obviously, Steve and I are on the patch who are separate active members of the community. And like about a month ago, we both kind of caught each other giggling that Abington put out a survey for the residents saying, hey, we are considering X, Y, Z, blah, 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 blah. We want to get your thoughts. Like, it's not such a novel idea that you might want to like, you know, get somebody's opinion, like in the backyard. No, it's, we're not personally slating anybody, but
Down the shore, you're seeing them more going into the commercial areas where it's going inside a building. Uh, that we look at, I think, in Bender and so forth. So you, you are seeing it. But it's a shame that it's, it's really right next to their house. For me, myself, I'm a little bit further out. I got a bad allergy, so my windows are shut. I don't hear it that much, but if I step outside, I do hear the pong.
I've been in their backyard, been back there many times. Thank you so much.
Bill?
Bill? Yeah.
Keep this meeting going. I didn't know about the issue. And I support, I support you guys. My sister's your neighbor. I didn't know of this problem until just now.
Who's your sister?
So she's literally right behind. Yeah, she's, I, I haven't heard of the issue. But what I say is the, yeah, barriers are a whole thing. Is that in screen?
Yes, so it provides, so this has come up several times with the board. The last thing that the board authorized um, were three different attempts at mitigation measures. One was this acrosta block fencing material. The second was a line of our providing. And the third was to install a time lock gate to reduce the hours available.
Right, but if you remove the sound barrier from these two sides, it'll reduce the sound a lot because you're creating an echo chamber in there. And if you open it to the, to the, to the pond, just
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, to the pond and to the other way, it would at least reduce the sound. And I know, I know uh, ten years ago, a homeowner planted a lot of trees on this side because of the issue with the sound from the tennis courts. So the arborvitaries would also den the sound on this side, but I'm still, you know, I can appreciate what you're saying.
Unfortunately, all of these things, there, there's not a remaining dedication.
Okay, so you're past, okay, my first thought was just take down those two sides at least. Okay, removal.
We started with the two sides.
Oh, okay.
And then we added the two sides.
And the whole was
And to be fair, um, all of the reports that you stated about the problems came after we installed the courts.
But some, some of them were before. Uh, the Florida reference that Merrill talked about, the sport, the sport did start in the kind of the retirement states.
Right.
And then it moved north. And in Florida, I remember when they first these courts first got up. Like within a week, I was like, what is this? And I Googled it and I found all kinds of stories, but they were Florida
Yeah.
and other locations. But um, everything I've said to you, I don't think I changed a word from the article.
I read everything you asked.
Yeah, there wasn't a word I embellished or changed and, and I have them here for you to read the same things. Um, and it's interesting because a lot of these articles were sent to me by either neighbors or people like David who play. And who were like, you know, and, and even when, you know, we had our twenty twenty-one school board election in the primary, I probably had a half a dozen people come up to me without even prompting to say, man, how was it like that? How, how is that? I feel sorry for you. I was like, sorry for me? How? You know, and then they had to explain. So it's, it's, I think the survey doesn't take into consideration that a lot of people want to come and talk to you. Uh, there was, I, I have some emails that were sent to me from neighbors. I can certainly read, but I won't. Uh, well, I'll tell, tell about one, Ed Popris. Everybody knows Ed Popris. He's the neighborhood walker in Abidale. He's the guy that walks backwards. You'll see him walking down the street backwards. That's Ed Popris. Ed said to me in an email, he's like, Steve, it's a great neighborhood. It's always been quiet. It's, it's like that corner of the park is now loud and it's no longer quiet. And so, you know, that's a guy who's been here also for, you know, thirty years. And again, just just, these are people that just come up to me and, and Merrill and just kind of feel sorry for us. And so these come out without even me saying, what do you think about it? It's like, okay.
A person at the park four days a week. I have four kids doing different sports and last week, I actually sat with Steve. I listened to the noise. It's bad. It, it truly is. It would be annoying. If I lived there, I would be upset. I'm just like, you know, I literally heard it. I was there. I witnessed it. It's I can, I can see they have a real quality of life issue. So I, I don't know what everyone else wants to do, but but what are the costs or what we have to do to make this a tennis court again? Uh, I, I feel that they have such a bad issue. And we tried mitigating it with a fence, bushes.
I mean, I'll say this too, like, uh, there was a, a neighbor that came out to a school board meeting and he, and she started an enrichment program inside Mary Avenue, the gym. Uh, for a few months, I thought that was great. Is there any opportunity to go inside Red Lion's gym? Maybe have two courts go on one way or another. Like Red Lion is your facility. Maybe there's some opportunity and we're there. Um, Denise once said to me about, well, why don't we, you know, HBA, I, I mean, we would, every neighbor here who lives by the park would be adamantly opposed to permanent lights in the park. We all say that. Right, I'm not, no. But, but if HBA wanted to have an opening day baseball game and bring in temporary lights to have a game, anything community oriented will listen. Of course, we're open to that. If somebody said, let's make it a tennis court jail. And then maybe two times a year, we're going to have a Saturday, Sunday tournament that raises money for the fire company and for the police department. You know, I'll, 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 I'll leave my house that weekend. Knock yourself out if it's going to be something that will township will like. I mean, there are ways to think about not, not permanently reinstating this, but like putting it at Red Lion Gym. You know, do more Mary Avenue. Now that we're not demo, demoing Mary Avenue School, maybe there's more opportunity to play indoors. First, um, what about Elkins?
I would highly advise against Elkins for the same reason we're going to recommend that they work here. Because of the higher rise here.
Yeah, well, it's, you're like
With the township does not own any outdoor property that it can
You're evil.
I, I think we really have to think about this. Let's talk. I mean, we can't talk, you know, let's, let's really think about this. I mean, Steve also was looking into one option that didn't, I spoke about privately too. So let's really think about this because we could talk about this. Steve and I have spoken about this for hours. Steve, Mr. Geiger and I, so we, we could talk for hours. It's not exactly on the agenda right now to make an exact decision.
So just to set some context in, so right now, this is not an item on the agenda. The Sunshine Act requires any items for a vote to be included on these. So you do have the ability by motion to um, to revise tonight's agenda. Or we can bring this back as a specific agenda item for the making. But right now, without some sort of direct action, your agenda does not allow it to make.
Bringing back from Mary with information about its cost possible.
Just out of curiosity.
They don't want to deal another month while we think about it.
Yeah.
We can now, we can temporarily have access to it.
To the pickleball.
So I guess, John, just as a, to humor this idea, so can the board make a motion now to add this as an agenda item for tonight?
Um, yes, they can.
So if, so if that's step one, then second step is, I mean, generally, whatever we're going to do is just take down the net.
Okay.
And then I guess put up, something I would preclude, yeah, just put up a big sign in the center. So then if anybody were to come out, just please call our police and they'll come enforce it because we don't have parks to stay. And then we'll get a price to
I thought, uh, did you want here?
Well, uh, so once it's closed, then we can get a price, but I mean, whatever that price is, like, and something has to be done with it so that people won't come back. We're going to have sufficient, we're going to have sufficient
I spoke to Steve privately about another option and, and Steve Geiger brought that up. Was, and actually Laura, Dorrit, talked to me about it was and was talking about enclosing the whole thing. And I don't know if Steve, I mean, it was
All right, can I make a motion so as it coincides till next month, so we can get a cost to
Well, we need to make a motion to amend the agenda to add you know, discussion of pickleball court to the agenda.
I make a motion to amend tonight's agenda to include discussion of temporarily closing of the ball courts.
Wait, adding and adding it to the agenda.
At, necessarily amending the agenda?
Yeah, same thing.
Mend or add matter? Do you add to the agenda?
Yeah.
To amend it? Second.
Okay, motion was moved and seconded to add pickleball to the agenda this evening. All those in favor, they signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now pickleball's added to the agenda.
I now make a motion.
My proposal is, please listen a minute. I would like two costs. One, and, and one, temporarily close, close the courts. Two, I would like two costs, cost for removal and a cost for encase, encasing the courts.
Encasing?
Yes, 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 completely closing it in.
That's a building.
Architecturally, and then the zoning for that is going to be
Your red off gown or red line?
Floating.
Okay, all right, then removal, cost for removal. You think that would be too costly for a good tennis court?
Yeah. Cost for removal.
Cost for removal and turning it back into a tennis court.
Okay, cost.
Okay, all right. So we'll scratch the enclosure. Okay. So I will make a motion to re- temporarily close, close the pickleball courts and cost to remove the courts and turn it back into a tennis court. All those in favor, please make a motion.
I seconded.
Motion is moved and seconded. All those in favor, please sit in front of the segment.
Aye.
Aye.
There is no offense, so the motion passes. All right, thank you for
So to be clear, it's closed until May and we're waiting on a cost to come in to convert it back to a tennis court.
Right, and we have to
If Steve can get
I think we have to open it for discussion again today.
Based on the price?
Well, it's going to be on the agenda.
Based on the price and because of course, we made this decision. How many years ago? Four years ago or so? Six years? No? In a bag. We can't do that. So let's, uh, let's like, we'll have a chance to
We're needing some kind of sign.
Yeah, we'll see, yeah. But you know, I I don't
Motion to adjourn. Any more common comments?
Oh, Chuck, I'm sorry.
Well, no, I have a question from Chris Tim. It's my favorite subject, the West development. Uh, does that all the ULAIR program?
Yes, it is. So would you say that construction's completed on that site, Tim?
So the, the county oversees that. So we share with them we issue occupancy.
Right, which so So they, they have, there's people living in there now? Yes. Okay, so there, so is the construction completed?
Yeah, but they, since they have a certificate of occupancy, they'll learn it.
No, no.
That's not.
So we, we started this with the, uh, I guess the only other Lord eligible project was the self-storage. Because they had an issue with getting their elevator, they were only allowed to occupy the ground for because the county board of assessment is the entity that ultimately makes these decisions. They were more comfortable with Lord beginning when the final occupancy certificate is issued.
Okay.
So there are currently some like non-occupancy related items that our code office is, is finalizing with West Room. So once it goes from a, an occupancy with conditions to just a final occupancy having an issue. That's the point that we'll share, the occupancy certificate with the board's assessment. It's a guy named Stuart. People send out uh, what the revised assessment is and what the schedule will be for implementing that over the next ten years. And then that's when Lord will be
So they're not paying no township taxes then?
Incorrect. They pay, they pay um, from, from a real estate
Real estate, they are, yes.
Uh, the premise of Lorda is that you pay the assessed value that exists from a pre-development state.
So what was prior to construction?
Correct. And in this instance, because that was a, it was a vacant lot, it does have a lot of assets. Um, so
School taxes, township taxes, they can.
Though they pay those at the current assessment.
Oh, but that property, well, what was it, that property that
And then over that ten year period, it will phase in per the schedule. Uh, whatever was that full assessment, which is probably going to be in the tens of quarters. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Tim. Okay, anyone else? Anyone else called too? I think there's someone waving their hand. Would you like to address the board?
We see you.
Yes, we see you.
Thank you. Thank you, Fran. Thank you. Hello, good evening. My name is Hillary Lenahan. I live at the corner of Brayborn and Byberry. And um, I just wanted to bring um, a comment on what I heard about the sidewalks and putting in the sidewalks near Heaton and Byberry. So just to, to give you some context, again, today, right after my kid's school bus turned onto Byberry Road from our street, there was an accident. Officer Daniel is one of the officers who responded. And I spoke to him, just like I've spoken to numerous people since I've lived in um, Lowermoreland since twenty sixteen uh, with my family. And I asked about sidewalks. In twenty sixteen, I, I was told and I, I was told by several people that sidewalks on Byberry Road is um, an issue of PennDOT. But um, here I'm listening to a vote being taken and possibly being used with some grant money that the township was awarded for some sidewalks. But I wanna, I wanna throw in and this request because um, a, all of the neighbors on, on my block can tell you a story of an accident they've been in or one that they've witnessed or saw or, or many near misses. But to consider the sidewalks from around Byberry and Brayborn to Pine Grove. This would also help be a visual This would also help be a visual for the people that speed down Byberry. Um, uh, coming from Buck Road, they speed down Byberry to, then they slow down at Pine for the light. We know that there's a lot of concerns about the increased speed and the traffic, especially since we've heard a lot lately about the BET developer. But I also want to bring up some information that, um, Officer Daniel shared and I'm sure you, you've, um. You spoke this meeting about the different, uh, traffic advisory, um, uh, recommendations or information that's presented. And, um, the, one of the things that I, that, um, Officer Daniel shared with me is that on Byberry, there's a lot of arrests made or tickets. Given also for impairment issues. Um, people driving either under some influence or I was actually rear ended on Byberry by somebody who was texting and driving. Um, and, um, and I was fortunate that a Lowermoreland police officer actually saw the accident that I was in. But I just wanted to put that proposal together. Um, it seems that, um, maybe the pickleball. Instance is something to learn from things happening without putting that out towards the rest of the public. So. Uh, because I know that there would be a lot of people, um, that live right around where I live. That would very much support sidewalks being put in the rest of the way to, um, Pine Road down Byberry. So it is that visual, so that people slow down, so that people see that there are people that might be walking here with their kids, with their dogs by themselves. And that this is a residential area. Byberry is not just this, um, you know, uh. Place where people kind of speed through to go from one area to the next. So I just wanted to present that and, um. And let you know that I, I'm, I'm not the only neighbor and if you haven't heard concerns from neighbors about, uh, sidewalks in other areas, then. There's just also the lack of maybe some other community engagement with different commissioners. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. Anyone else on Zoom? Okay, the board has an executive session with the manager after this meeting to go legal, a legal matter. So with that being said. We'll adjourn this evening. We can motion to adjourn. Thank you.